The St. Paul City Council will come to order. Roll call.
Tao, Tolbert, Busuri, Jalali Nelson, Naker, Prince. Council President Bren Moen. Six present, one absent being Councilmember Tao, who is excused.
Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda items three through 25 are before you for your consideration.
It's a big consent agenda. Is there anyone who knows of something that should be taken separately? All right, seeing none, Mr. Tolbert moves consent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The consent agenda is adopted. Item number 26, Resolution 19-1870, Committing to Advocating for the Renewable, Equitable, and Locally Produced Energy Commitments expressed in the Climate Action and Resilience Plan and to opposing proposed new fossil fuel energy infrastructure. Laid over from October 23rd.
Ms. Prince.
Yes. The St. Paul 350 group has been meeting with Excel Energy and has been having productive conversations. They have asked us to lay this over until December 18th.
All right. Ms. Prince moves to lay over until December 18th. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is laid over to December 18th. Item number 27, Resolution 19-1943, Commemorating the Observance of Veterans Day on November 11th, 2019, and Recognizing City Employees Who Are Veterans.
Ms. Prince.
Thank you. I would like to invite Brian Balfans from our police department and his daughter Summer to come up with me. I'm happy to present this resolution. Brian has worked for the city for a number of years, and he contacted our office and said, "Isn't it time to do something meaningful again if we haven't for a while on the Veterans Day, which is coming up Monday, and is a holiday for city employees?" So with that, Brian helped me put together this resolution honoring all of our veterans, both within city government and in our community. So this is commemorating the observance of Veterans Day on November 11th, 2019, and recognizing city employees who are veterans. Whereas the city of St. Paul, and specifically the St. Paul City Council, has a deep respect for our freedom of speech and other inalienable rights. And whereas those rights and freedoms were obtained through the sacrifice and devotion of our nation's veterans. And whereas the observance of Veterans Day, formerly known as Armistice Day, was a recognition of the cessation of hostility of World War I at the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. And whereas the city of St. Paul supports peace. And whereas honoring the bravery, heroism, and sacrifice of the 263 volunteers of the 1st Minnesota Regiment, who on July 2nd, 1863, at the Battle of Gettysburg sustained 215 casualties and helped to turn the tide of battle and preserve the union of our nation and ensure the end of slavery. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln stated that, quote, "The great task remaining before us from these honored dead, we take increased devotion to that cause for which they gave the last full measure of devotion," unquote. And whereas this council recognizes with great solemnity the dedication of the City Hall and Ramsey County Courthouse as a memorial to those Minnesotans who gave that last full measure of devotion. And whereas the city of St. Paul recognizes the unique contributions and burdens of those who continue to serve our nation, both domestically and abroad. And whereas the city of St. Paul continues to welcome and respect all who seek to defend our rights to freedom, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and is a city of inclusion and acceptance. And whereas the city of St. Paul expresses deep gratitude to the women and men who serve our nation, and for the families, friends, neighbors, agencies, and employers who support that service. And whereas this council takes tremendous pride in recognizing the veterans who work for the city of St. Paul, and therefore be it resolved that the St. Paul City Council recognizes Veterans Day, November 11th, 2019, by publicly thanking all veterans for their dedication and sacrifice to ensure our continued peace, prosperity, and democracy. Brian and Summer, would you like to say a few words?
Council President Bren Moen, council members, Councilmember Prince, thank you. Thank you for serving as elected officials, and thank you for recognizing veterans. I also want to thank Chief Axtell, Deputy Chief Mademan, Tony Newburn, and the Mayor's Office for bringing this all together. And I also want to encourage all of you, if just for one day in the next year, to spend a moment at Fort Snelling National Cemetery or the Minneapolis VA, and to remember those that are still serving as we all sit here today. Thank you.
And I would just like to thank all the veterans for sacrificing so much that we can just live our everyday lives, and their service will never be forgotten. And we have pins for Veterans Day that we'd like to pass out to anyone who wants them.
Thank you. Shall we? We can pass them along this way? And now I have a very special announcement, which was going to be a surprise for Brian, but I accidentally spilled the beans myself. But when Brian had contacted me about this resolution, he was also in the process of applying to create a Veterans and Military Employee Resource Network. And we just received word this morning that the ERN Council voted unanimously to create a Veterans and Military Employee Resource Network. So to just give us a little bit more information on that news, we have Tony Newborn, our Acting Director of Hero, and our Chief Equity Officer to say a few words.
Councilmember President Bren Moen and councilmembers, thank you so much for having me here. As Councilmember Prince stated, my name is Tony Newborn, Chief Equity Officer, and also serving as the interim Hero Director. Before I took on the Hero task as the Chief Equity Officer, we started the Employee Resource Network. And when we started it under the Coleman Administration, we probably had two groups, the Women's Employee Resource Network, and we had another group that was in the process of forming. And now I'm proud to say that we have a total of seven employee resource networks. Includes the Women's Group, it includes St. Pride, which is our LGBTQ, Sustained St. Paul is our Resiliency and Sustainability Group. We have Iwok, which is the Indigenous Women of Color group as well, and happy to say that we now have a Veterans Group. We started this work about four years ago, and really copied and pasted from Hennepin County, which was one of the first, at least in the state, one of the first government organizations to start an Employee Resource Network. And we view this, the network, as both an opportunity for employees to gather and to be around like-minded individuals, but also as a business resource to the city of St. Paul and to our organization. And so we've had a couple of our Employee Resource Networks to drive some policies and to create some policies with our Human Resources Department. So I'm excited that our Employee Resource Networks continue to grow, and I'm excited about that we have a new Veterans Employee Resource Network. So, you know, feel free to both reach out as policies and procedures come your way and interest from the community come your way. The Resource Networks are supposed to, are set aside to be a resource to all of us, including the internal staff as well as the council. Thank you so much for having me. Thank you.
I will go and move approval of the resolution.
I was just going to say that. That was a great update, parrying with that resolution. I'm glad that we got to hear both of those, because to me, it answers the call to do something, and to, it's an opportunity for our city to honor and support veterans. So I think that's great, one-two there. Any other comments before we vote? Ms. Prince moves the resolution.
And I'll just say one more thing. I think one of the things that Brian mentioned to me when we were talking about the Employee Resource Network, is even among our many active-duty military employees and our veterans, they don't necessarily know who they are. And so this is a great way of their being able to bring that shared experience together as employees, and to be able to support each other around, around all kinds of issues through that unique perspective of military service.
Ms. Prince moves approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted. Item number 28, Second Reading of Ordinance 19-69, Amending Section 105.04 of the Legislative Code to aid construction of Boulevard Rain Gardens. This ordinance is laid over to November 20th for third reading public hearing. Item number 29, First Reading of Ordinance 19-64, Granting the Application of David Wetherell to Rezone Property at 602 Lawson Avenue West from RM2 Multiple Family Residential to T2 Traditional Neighborhood, and Amending Chapter 60 of the Legislative Code pertaining to the zoning map. This ordinance is laid over to November 13th for second reading. Item number 30, Resolution Public Hearing 19-341, Amending the Financing and Spending Plans in the Office of Financial Services in the amount of $30,000 for contribution received from the Fund for Cities of Service 8.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 32, Resolution Public Hearing 19-369, Amending the Financing and Spending Plans in the Fire Department in the amount of $125 for contribution received from the St. Paul Area Chamber of Commerce for health and wellness equipment for the firefighters.
$125. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, Mr. Tolbert moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 33, Resolution Public Hearing 19-366, Authorizing an Increase in the Parks and Recreation Grant Fund Budget in the amount of $1,795,500 to reflect various grant funding awarded in 2019 from the State of Minnesota DED, Minnesota State Arts Board, Como Friends, Metropolitan Council, and State of Minnesota DNR.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Nelson moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 33, Resolution Public Hearing 19-366, Authorizing an Increase in the Parks and Recreation Grant Fund Budget in the amount of $1,795,500 to reflect various grant funding awarded in 2019 from the State of Minnesota DED, Minnesota State Arts Board, Como Friends, Metropolitan Council, and State of Minnesota DNR.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Nelson moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 34, Resolution Public Hearing 19-342, Amending the Financing and Spending Plans to Department of Public Works Capital Budget by adding Ramsey County funding into the 2018 Signalized Intersection Safety Improvements Program for the replacement of the traffic signal at Lexington and St. Clair.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 35, Resolution Public Hearing 19-367, Recommending an Amendment to St. Paul Regional Water's 2019 Adopted Budget to Record the Increased Financing and Spending from the Minnesota Historical Society Grant for $250,000 for repair to the historic Highland Park Water Tower, and to transfer $285,000 in capital funds to operating funds for a portion of the grant match.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 37, Resolution Public Hearing 19-358, Approving the Application of Podium Sports Marketing for a Sound Level Variance for Amplified Music or Announcements During the Turkey Trope St. Paul on November 28th on Shepherd Road at Washington Street and at Sherman Street.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 37, Resolution Public Hearing 19-358, Approving the Application of Podium Sports Marketing for a Sound Level Variance for Amplified Music or Announcements During the Turkey Trope St. Paul on November 28th on Shepherd Road at Washington Street and at Sherman Street.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Legislative hearing consent agenda items 38 through 48 are before you for your consideration.
Good afternoon, Ms. Merman.
Good afternoon, Council President Bren Moen, council members. There is only one person present on a legislative hearing item. He has indicated he does not want to testify, but I'll ask you to read the item into the record, and I'll read his written statement.
Okay, thank you.
Item number 46, RLHCO 19-15, Appeal of Fred Sandy Jr. or Senior to a Correction Notice Including Condemnation at 1561 Shepherd Avenue.
Ms. Merman.
This particular case is one where there were two primary problems that led to the condemnation of the property. The first problem had to do with two rooms in the basement being used for sleeping purposes. One of the rooms has a ceiling of six foot 10 inches. However, it has no egress window to the outside. The other room has a ceiling height of six foot five inches, but it does have an egress window, but that ceiling is way too low according to the code. So neither of the two rooms can be used for sleeping purposes and have been vacated. The other item was there cannot be more than four unrelated adults, and there were counted to be six unrelated adults in the house. Mr. Sandy, the owner's written statement is as follows. "I will cease to use all basement rooms at 1561 Shepherd St. Paul as bedrooms until they are co-compliant. I will also reduce the number of unrelated adults to four. I've corrected the items on the Correction Notice of 9/1709, except the egress window in one of the basement rooms. I will not, I will do it next spring, since the person I have to do it can't do it until then." And that's from Mr. Sandy, so he is in agreement, but he did come down.
Okay. So your recommendation is to...
My recommendation is to deny the appeal and require that the items be taken care of, and that there be an extension granted on the other items in the order, but he has those addressed already.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Merman? All right, Mr. Tolbert? This is a public hearing. I guess Ms. Merman read its statement into the record. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak on this? All right. Mr. Tolbert moves to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Tolbert?
I'll make a motion based on what Ms. Merman read into the record as her recommendation.
All right. So Mr. Tolbert's moved the recommendation of the legislative hearing officer. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted. We will now have a public hearing on the remainder of the Legislative Hearing Consent Agenda, items 38 through 48. If you are here for item 38, between 38 and 48, this is your public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to these items? Seeing none, Ms. Prince moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 35, Resolution Public Hearing 19-367, Recommending an Amendment to St. Paul Regional Water's 2019 Adopted Budget to Record the Increased Financing and Spending from the Minnesota Historical Society Grant for $250,000 for repair to the historic Highland Park Water Tower, and to transfer $285,000 in capital funds to operating funds for a portion of the grant match.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 37, Resolution Public Hearing 19-358, Approving the Application of Podium Sports Marketing for a Sound Level Variance for Amplified Music or Announcements During the Turkey Trope St. Paul on November 28th on Shepherd Road at Washington Street and at Sherman Street.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 35, Resolution Public Hearing 19-367, Recommending an Amendment to St. Paul Regional Water's 2019 Adopted Budget to Record the Increased Financing and Spending from the Minnesota Historical Society Grant for $250,000 for repair to the historic Highland Park Water Tower, and to transfer $285,000 in capital funds to operating funds for a portion of the grant match.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 33, Resolution Public Hearing 19-366, Authorizing an Increase in the Parks and Recreation Grant Fund Budget in the amount of $1,795,500 to reflect various grant funding awarded in 2019 from the State of Minnesota DED, Minnesota State Arts Board, Como Friends, Metropolitan Council, and State of Minnesota DNR.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 33, Resolution Public Hearing 19-366, Authorizing an Increase in the Parks and Recreation Grant Fund Budget in the amount of $1,795,500 to reflect various grant funding awarded in 2019 from the State of Minnesota DED, Minnesota State Arts Board, Como Friends, Metropolitan Council, and State of Minnesota DNR.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 36, Resolution Public Hearing 19-371, Recommending an Amendment to the 2019 Adopted Budget to Record the Increase in Spending and Financing for the Demolition of the Highland Reservoir Pipe Assessment Modifications and Repairs to Buildings and Structures and Technology Improvements.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Tolbert moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 37, Resolution Public Hearing 19-358, Approving the Application of Podium Sports Marketing for a Sound Level Variance for Amplified Music or Announcements During the Turkey Trope St. Paul on November 28th on Shepherd Road at Washington Street and at Sherman Street.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Legislative hearing consent agenda items 38 through 48 are before you for your consideration.
Good afternoon, Ms. Merman.
Good afternoon, Council President Bren Moen, council members. There is only one person present on a legislative hearing item. He has indicated he does not want to testify, but I'll ask you to read the item into the record, and I'll read his written statement.
Okay, thank you.
Item number 46, RLHCO 19-15, Appeal of Fred Sandy Jr. or Senior to a Correction Notice Including Condemnation at 1561 Shepherd Avenue.
Ms. Merman.
This particular case is one where there were two primary problems that led to the condemnation of the property. The first problem had to do with two rooms in the basement being used for sleeping purposes. One of the rooms has a ceiling of six foot 10 inches. However, it has no egress window to the outside. The other room has a ceiling height of six foot five inches, but it does have an egress window, but that ceiling is way too low according to the code. So neither of the two rooms can be used for sleeping purposes and have been vacated. The other item was there cannot be more than four unrelated adults, and there were counted to be six unrelated adults in the house. Mr. Sandy, the owner's written statement is as follows. "I will cease to use all basement rooms at 1561 Shepherd St. Paul as bedrooms until they are co-compliant. I will also reduce the number of unrelated adults to four. I've corrected the items on the Correction Notice of 9/1709, except the egress window in one of the basement rooms. I will not, I will do it next spring, since the person I have to do it can't do it until then." And that's from Mr. Sandy, so he is in agreement, but he did come down.
Okay. So your recommendation is to...
My recommendation is to deny the appeal and require that the items be taken care of, and that there be an extension granted on the other items in the order, but he has those addressed already.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Merman? All right, Mr. Tolbert? This is a public hearing. I guess Ms. Merman read its statement into the record. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak on this? All right. Mr. Tolbert moves to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Tolbert?
I'll make a motion based on what Ms. Merman read into the record as her recommendation.
All right. So Mr. Tolbert's moved the recommendation of the legislative hearing officer. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 33, Resolution Public Hearing 19-366, Authorizing an Increase in the Parks and Recreation Grant Fund Budget in the amount of $1,795,500 to reflect various grant funding awarded in 2019 from the State of Minnesota DED, Minnesota State Arts Board, Como Friends, Metropolitan Council, and State of Minnesota DNR.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 33, Resolution Public Hearing 19-366, Authorizing an Increase in the Parks and Recreation Grant Fund Budget in the amount of $1,795,500 to reflect various grant funding awarded in 2019 from the State of Minnesota DED, Minnesota State Arts Board, Como Friends, Metropolitan Council, and State of Minnesota DNR.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 34, Resolution Public Hearing 19-342, Amending the Financing and Spending Plans to Department of Public Works Capital Budget by adding Ramsey County funding into the 2018 Signalized Intersection Safety Improvements Program for the replacement of the traffic signal at Lexington and St. Clair.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 36, Resolution Public Hearing 19-371, Recommending an Amendment to the 2019 Adopted Budget to Record the Increase in Spending and Financing for the Demolition of the Highland Reservoir Pipe Assessment Modifications and Repairs to Buildings and Structures and Technology Improvements.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 37, Resolution Public Hearing 19-358, Approving the Application of Podium Sports Marketing for a Sound Level Variance for Amplified Music or Announcements During the Turkey Trope St. Paul on November 28th on Shepherd Road at Washington Street and at Sherman Street.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 37, Resolution Public Hearing 19-358, Approving the Application of Podium Sports Marketing for a Sound Level Variance for Amplified Music or Announcements During the Turkey Trope St. Paul on November 28th on Shepherd Road at Washington Street and at Sherman Street.
...of unrelated adults to four. I've corrected the items on the correction notice of nine seventeen oh nine, except the egress window in one of the basement rooms. I will not, or I will do it next spring. And since the person I have to do it can't do it until then. And that's from Mr. Sandy, so he is in agreement, but he did come down.
Okay. So your recommendation is to...
My recommendation is to deny the appeal and require that the items be taken care of and that there be an extension granted on the other items in the order, but he has those addressed already.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Mormon? All right, Mr. Talbert? This is a public hearing. I guess Ms. Mormon read a statement into the record. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak on this? All right. Mr. Talbert wants to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Talbert?
I'll make a motion based on what Ms. Mormon read into the record as her recommendation.
All right. So Mr. Talbert's moved the recommendation of the legislative hearing. Officer, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted.
We will now have a public hearing on the remainder of the legislative hearing consent agenda, items thirty-eight through forty-eight. If you are here for item thirty-eight, between thirty-eight and forty-eight, this is your public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to these items? Seeing none, Ms. Prince moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the consent agenda is adopted as amended.
Which brings us to news from the wards before we recess for public hearings, and I have some. Is anyone ready for this? Ms. Prince, you look like you are.
I am.
All right, let's hear it.
Would you like me to start?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay. Right now, or beginning at five o'clock until seven, Metro State University is opening its Grow It Center, which is a greenhouse that had been owned by the State Department of Ag, and it had gone out of useful service and was sitting there virtually attached to the campus of Metro State and, coincidentally, right next to the office and gardens and facilities of Urban Roots, our youth development program that does youth development through gardening and food and nutrition. So, we're very excited that with help from the city and the STAR program, the Grow It Center is going to be reopening and will be a community facility for growing all year round, both food for the community, and it will also be part of the university's science programs, and we'll be doing research of all kinds in there. So, it's very exciting, and we, as the city, play a role. So that's tonight from five to seven, and I regret that I won't be there, but if you're over in the Dayton's Bluff area, be sure to stop in because they're going to have refreshments and tours, and it will be fun for all.
Yes, we should ban those events on Wednesday, public hearing nights.
Indeed.
Yes. Maybe that will be a resolution to consider next year. Okay. Any other news from the wards? Ms. Naker?
Thank you. This actually is not in Ward Two, but it's being co-hosted by the St. Paul Three-K Committee that Councilmembers Prince and Jolli Nelson and I sit on, as well as the Blue Cross Blue Shield Foundation. It's a screening of a documentary called No Small Matter about the importance and the challenges of early childhood education. It's not a documentary that you can see on Netflix in public at all, so it's one of these things that you have to go to one of these screenings to see, and there have been a number throughout town, but this is the most recent. It's from five to seven-thirty. There's going to be a screening of the movie and then a panel discussion afterwards, so it should be fun. It's free and it's open to everyone, and I think there's still some seats left.
Other news? Ms. Nelson?
I can share. There are a series of community conversations happening related to how we can come together and address gun violence and other forms of violence that are a public health issue with Mayor Carter, and there's one happening in Ward Four this Thursday, tomorrow night. It's at Central Baptist Church, which is a couple blocks off the Snelling Light Real Stop, and that's six-thirty to eight. So I want to make sure people know about it and are part of the conversation if they'd like to be.
Other news? I have two things to add. One is tomorrow night, there is a star party at the Como Planetarium, which is at Como Elementary School. A lot of folks don't even know we have a planetarium, but there it is at Como Elementary School. It is free and open to the public from six to nine tomorrow. Mercury is passing in front of the sun right now as we speak, and so there'll be something that will be cool to be looking at at the star party, again, six to nine tomorrow. You could do a twofer because tomorrow night also, on the North End, we will be bringing, rolling out the first glimpse of what will be the new North End Community Center that will be next adjacent to the Rice Street Library. So the meeting is at the Rice Street Library. We will look at some design ideas that have been put together by Snow Krylich, which is the firm that did CHS Field. So a pretty incredible architecture firm doing some pretty cool work to build something amazing for the North End community. So that is five to seven. Good opportunity to share your thoughts and feedback on this first pass at what a rec center, community center, could look like there. So that is it for news at the moment. We will be in recess until five-thirty.
Your call.
Tao, Talbert, Busuri, Jolli Nelson, Naker, Prince, Council President Bren Moen. Five present, two absent, being Councilmembers Tao and Busuri, who are both excused. Item number forty-nine, Resolution Public Hearing nineteen dash three thirty-seven, approving adverse action against the auto body repair shop and auto repair garage license held by SKD Auto Tech LLC, doing business as SKD Auto Tech at eighty College Avenue, Cottage Avenue West.
Ms. Carter? Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. Council President Bren Moen, members of council, Teresa Scardt, on behalf of the Department of Safety and Inspections. This involves a notice of violation that was sent to the licensee on August thirteenth of two thousand nineteen after a complaint-based inspection of the licensed premises on May eighth of two thousand nineteen. The inspector who went out from the Department of Safety and Inspections observed and documented with photographs violations of four of the license conditions. The licensee got a letter on May thirteenth of two thousand nineteen, which detailed the violations, and gave the licensee until June fourteenth of two thousand nineteen to come into compliance with the violations. On July third of two thousand nineteen, the inspector did return for a reinspection and observed and documented with photographs the violations of the same four license conditions. Your packets do contain photographs of the violations observed. This is a first-time matrix penalty request by the department for a recommendation of five hundred dollar penalty.
Great. Do anyone have questions for Ms. Carter? All right, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Welcome.
Hi.
And I guess, I didn't mention this, we've got rolling right away. When you come up to testify, if you could give us your name, tell us where you live, and then share your perspective and be clear what your ask is to the council, and then when you're done, if you can sign in the ledger on the side, we'll add that to the public record. Thanks for being here tonight.
Okay. Hello, my name is Sodoe. I'm the owner of SKD Auto Tech. I purchase, I live in St. Paul, in the east side, in St. Paul, and I purchased this property about three and a half years ago, and when I purchased this, there's a lot of vehicles there, and since I bought the property, I've been trying to clean out. I probably have throwaway probably more than twenty, thirty cars over there in the periods of three years. I'm here to contest about the fine and have, I've cleaned up the property, and I have photographed that, you know, the back section, the package that you guys received, and I also received it as well, that they have a lot of, you know, parts and used tires and all that stuff. I have cleaned up all the used tires, cost me about thirty-two hundred dollars to get rid of it. They brought in about two semi trucks and they throw away all those tires. And in this photograph, I'm not sure whether you can see it, but I cleaned up the front. When the inspector came, the garbage, the garbage container was full because I only have requested to pick up once every two weeks, but since then, I have requested advanced disposal to pick up every week so that the garbage won't be overfilled over time. And on the back section, and I cleaned up, and the car is parking in a single line instead of like staggered, like double parking, I don't have that anymore. And the back section, if you can see in the photographs here, I requested the Northern Metal Recycling to bring in the metal recycle bin so I can throw away the metal stuff, like the engine, the transmission in there, and I have another bin, just requested, just putting the brake rotors, so keep it clean. In the back section, I did not park any vehicle anymore because on my site plan, when I purchased the building, this is classified, like gravel area here, I cannot park, so, but I, when the inspector came out, you know, I'm still in the process of clearing out all the used cars and the cars that, you know, been there for like ages, and one of the, one of the cars, there are like two vans, like big van that it does not belong to me. I call Rapid Tow, Rapid Tow, come and get it away because I can't find the owner, I don't know who they are. It came with the property when I purchased it. So, other than that, that's all I have, and I would like to be able to use like the back section of the property because right now I am not allowed to park or have a storage, and I requested, I get a quote for a black top pro to come and pay. It's going to cost me about twenty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, which the money that I don't have yet, but I am, you know, in the future, looking into getting paid and then redo my site plan so I can get, utilize the property in the back. A little bit about myself, I came to the United States in August of two thousand as a refugee from Burma, and right now with this building being in St. Paul, the heart of St. Paul, I'm able to service a lot of the current communities. I provide a job to a lot of my current refugees' communities. I also have a trucking business, which we specialize in automobile transportation. We haul vehicle from state to state and, you know, having the building and be able to utilize as parking because sometime we had to park the vehicle, use it as a terminal for other transport to get it to the auction, to the dealer. If the, if a company want the vehicle to go to North Dakota, but we don't, but we have a vehicle that coming from, let's say, Missouri, we'll bring it back to St. Paul, and then the North Dakota company will pick up the vehicle going to North Dakota. So we use it as, as a terminal as well, and that's why it's very important for me to be able to use like the back space of the property.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions? All right, thank you very much for your testimony. Is there anyone else here to speak on this issue? All right, then I would move to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails. Mr. Talbert, I just would like to say thank you so much for your efforts to clean up your site. I know that it's kind of tucked away in a place that's off the beaten path, and it really seems like things have accumulated there over time, and you're taking responsibility for things that happened long before you owned the property, and you're doing great things with it. The pictures that you just showed are amazing. I don't know if my colleagues have had the opportunity to see what it looked like before. It's in our records in front of us, but you've really done amazing work. And so I'm going to make a recommendation that we stay the fine, assuming, or provided that there's no same or similar violations for the next twelve months. It's going to be tough to not have those same or similar violations because there's quite a few, but based on your track record and the work that you're doing there, I think that should be fine, and that's a way to take that five hundred dollars and invest it into your business instead of into fines. So that will be my recommendation, and then I am interested in, as we move forward, continuing to talk to you about looking for resources to help continue with your project, your black tapping project, so that you can utilize the full space. So my recommendation would be to stay the, stay the fine for no same or similarities for twelve months. Is there any discussion on that motion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted as amended. Item number fifty, ABZA nineteen dash six, considering Daniel Carlson's appeal of a decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals approving variances of the lot coverage and height requirements, allowing construction of a two-story detached garage in the rear yard of an existing single-family dwelling at seventeen eighty Goodrich Avenue.
And we'll begin this item with a staff report. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam President, Councilmembers. I am the new staff member. My name is Matthew Graybar for the Board of Zoning Appeals. The previous staff member, Jerome Benner, accepted a position with the Met Council and is no longer with the city. So we were sad to see him go, but we are very happy for him to move up.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. I've worked in the zoning division now for the Department of Safety and Inspections for three years. I graduated from Hamline University with a master's degree in public administration. I also serve in the Army Reserve and the six forty-fourth Regional Support Group out of Fort Snelling. I also have a combined total service years of sixteen years with six years active duty in the Marine Corps and the rest in the Army Reserve. Regarding this hearing tonight, the appeal of the BZA's decision to grant a variance for lot coverage and height of an accessory structure for seventeen eighty Goodrich Avenue was submitted by the property owner located at one forty-one South Wheeler Street. That little site plan, okay. The appellant states that his objection to the variance was never heard due to clerical errors within our department, that the project is out of scale for the neighborhood, and that there were more objections to the variance than was evidenced at the BZA hearing. Staff recommended denial of the requested variance due to no practical difficulty being established of the fact that it will alter the character of the surrounding area and that there is nothing unique about the property to warrant a garage greater than a thousand square feet. The property owner at seventeen eighty Goodrich Avenue was approved for variances of the rear yard lot coverage and accessory building height. Here's a site plan from the property owner that seventeen eighty Goodrich, that was approved. I also have an elevation, if you'd like to take a look at it. That's all I have pending further. Any questions that you have?
Are there any questions? Mr. Talbert?
Could you go? Sorry, my mic was off. Could you go over the original staff report?
Absolutely. Would you like me to go over the filings, Madam President, Councilmember Talbert?
That would be helpful, yeah, before the BZA.
The purpose was that the applicant is proposing to construct a two-story, three-car detached garage in the rear yard of an existing single-family dwelling. The following variances are being requested. One, accessory buildings must not cover more than thirty-five percent of the rear yard, which is three thousand twenty-one square feet, or one thousand square feet, whichever is less. There's an existing one hundred and twenty square foot shed that would remain, and that proposed accessory building footprint would be one thousand one hundred and twenty square feet for a total of one thousand two hundred and forty square feet, for a variance request of two hundred and forty square feet. Accessory structures with gable-style roofs have a maximum building height of fifteen feet. The applicant is proposing a building height of sixteen feet, four inches, for a variance request of one foot, four inches. This is a sixty-one-foot wide and two hundred and twenty-five-deep lot in the alley access to detached garage in the rear yard. This area consists predominantly of single-family dwellings. This lot currently has no garage or any off-street parking. Zoning Code Section sixty-three point five zero one, accessory building and uses stipulates that in RL through RM two residential districts, accessory buildings on a zoning lot with residential use shall not exceed fifteen feet in height. Accessory buildings on a zoning lot may occupy up to thirty-five percent of the rear yard. Rear yards which join alleys may include half the alley to calculate the area of the rear yard, which may be occupied by accessory buildings. On zoning lots containing one and two family dwellings, there shall be a maximum of three accessory buildings, the total of which shall not occupy more than one thousand square feet on the zoning lot. Findings. Number one, the variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning code. The applicant is proposing to construct a two-story, one thousand one hundred and twenty square foot detached garage with a workshop. The proposed garage height is sixteen feet, four inches, to the midpoint of the gable roof. There's an existing one hundred and twenty square foot shed that would remain. According to the applicant, two of the garage stalls would be used to park vehicles, while the third garage stall would be used as a workshop. The second story of the detached garage would be used as space for hobby and creative art space. The proposed garage, combined with existing shed, is less than thirty-five percent of the rear yard, however, it exceeds one thousand square feet, resulting in the requested variance. The intent of Section sixty point one zero three of the zoning code is to promote the aesthetics and economic viability of the community. The structure serves as an amenity to the property and would be relative in size to the large, single-family parcel. Provided that the garage complements the existing house and is not used for commercial purposes or as a home occupation, this request is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning code to provide parking in order to lessen congestion in the public streets. This finding is met. For number two, the variance is consistent with the comprehensive plan. One goal of the city's comprehensive plan is to encourage property owners to reinvest in their properties by maintaining its vitality and preserving the neighborhood, housing strategy two point one. This finding is met. Third finding, the applicant has asserted that there are practical difficulties in complying with the provision that the property owner proposes to use a property in a reasonable manner not permitted by the provision. Economic considerations alone do not constitute practical difficulties. The proposed garage is forty feet wide and one thousand one hundred and twenty square feet in size, while the house thirty-two point eight feet wide and is one thousand three hundred square feet in size. Although the lot is larger than a typical single-family lot, the applicant has not demonstrated how a one thousand square foot garage and a height of fifteen feet that are allowed under the zoning code are impractical or unreasonable. There are no practical difficulties to justify the variance request. This finding is not met. For finding four, the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner. Other than relatively large size of the property, there's nothing unique of the property to warrant such a garage. This finding is not met. For finding five, the variance will not permit any use that is not permitted in the zoning district where the affected land is located. Accessory structures are allowed in all zoning districts. This finding is met.
How many more findings are there?
There are six. I'm on the last one, so don't worry.
I mean, we all wanted to know, so I decided to ask.
Of course.
Okay.
The variance will not alter the essential character of the surrounding area. There are no garages with similar size footprint as proposed garage on the block, although a garage with similar height is located on the lot behind this property, the proposed garage will alter the character of the surrounding area. This finding is not met. District fourteen, the McAllister Groveland Community Council provided a letter recommending approval of the variance. Staff did receive a letter recommending approval from the neighbor located at one thirty-two Wheeler Street South, and our staff recommendation, based on findings three, four, and six, staff recommends denial of the variance requested.
Great.
Thank you. I move over to the...
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. We will hear from the appellant. Welcome.
My name is Dan Carlson, and this is my wife Barbara Pilling. She's lived at one forty-one South Wheeler Street since nineteen eighty-one, and I showed up on the day we were married twenty-five years ago. We're requesting that you rescind the approval of the BGA findings that allowed this variance, or, in fact, and our position also is that we would like them to conform with existing building code. Starting out, our objections, our initial objections, were never reported to the public hearing, even though they were submitted in a timely way. So we just never really had a chance to speak to anybody about what was going on. So, first of all, our objections were never reported. And then when we get, I know there was an approval from the MAC Groveland District Council public hearing, and that was held on the twenty-fifth. We, my wife, and many of our neighbors were never made aware of this public hearing of the MAC Groveland Council either. So a lot of the requests for variance came, was a surprise to us, and the approval from the MAC Groveland Council. I would just reiterate what the staff from the BGA said, that three of the six findings were not met by the homeowner. Upon further investigation by my wife and I, we found that there were way more objections in the neighborhood to this variance than were aired at either the MAC Groveland District Council or the BGA public hearing. And to that end, we've gathered additional signatures from our neighbors and adding their objections to ours, and we, I think we have about ten signatures of about seven different property owners that encircle the Dan Bustos's property, and also I believe there is letters to the staff communicating their objections to the variance. And I would go through the findings a little bit, too, and I'd like to just pull out, I think you've got a fancy... So I can put that there, and you can see that?
Yep.
Well, that's...
There's a magical camera.
It is magical.
Yeah.
Only I can't see it, but I'll have to look right over there. So I was going to say, first of all, that this garage is out of scale. This would be the first three-car garage... This would be the first three-car garage on our alleyway. There aren't any three-car garages there. This would be basically the first two-story structure in 110 years. There is an old two-story garage, but it was probably built prior to the existing building codes. The garage footprint of 1,120 square feet is larger than the number of the homes that it will be surrounded by. There are four homes closer to this proposed garage than the actual homeowner himself who's receiving the variance. So, right. And they all object to the size of this.
And I do think it's important, and a lot of times before we do these BGA hearings, to remind people that we really, we need to hear how there was an error, as opposed to how people feel.
Well, the first error is we weren't notified.
Right.
And our objections were never aired.
Yep, and I don't, I don't mean to, I know you're on a roll.
Sure.
I just want to remind you that those are the things that we're most listening for, is where's the error? Okay.
Well, the error would be, you know, that we're, we agree with the staff report from the BGA and that it was overruled by the BGA itself. So that certainly is, and those items have to do with the garage being out of scale and that they had, that the zoning code is, in fact, a practical and reasonable use, as long as they conform to code.
Can I say something?
Sure you can.
And I just want to say that we are not, we're not trying to make enemies of our neighbors. We, we like our neighbors. We just, we and many of the other people in the alley who signed our appeal just feel that the, that the variance is unwarranted, that the size, that, and we also don't want to deny a garage or an art space, but that the size is, is out of scale and unnecessary. So that's basically, basically our main objection.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on the side of the appeal?
Anyone else want?
Here, anyone else here to speak on the side of the appeal?
We can go.
Great. Welcome.
Hi, Stuart Corin, 1793 Princeton. I just want to second what Dan said, that we feel it's out of scale with the neighborhood and that the initial objections weren't heard.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on the side of the appeal? Appellants. Okay, so we'll switch over, and are there, is, are there folks here who would like to speak in opposition?
Yeah, in opposition.
Yeah.
Thank you. Madam President, council members, my name is Julie Bustos, and I live at 1780 Goodrich. My husband is the applicant for the variance. And just wanted to share a few things about the process that we went through. It's been a long, multi-year process that we've gone through. We feel like we've done that with great diligence and care. We started off with doing research on area garages, and as mentioned in the report and as mentioned by our neighbors, there aren't many large garages in our alleyway, aside from the one that's directly behind our property. But looking around the Tangle Town neighborhood, there are multiple instances of multi-car garages as well as two-car garages. So we feel, we felt early in our process that that would substantiate not deviating from the essential character of the neighborhood because of those pre-existing structures, both old and new. Once we went through that process, we had our, our architect map the, the garage into a photo of our yard to see if it felt like it was egregious in size, and we didn't feel like it was, and I can show a picture of what that looks like. Where do I do that? Oh, right here. Thank you. Got it. So that's what the garage looks like in our yard. You can see some of the surrounding structures, like the garage next door. And I would like to point out that I know our neighbors are gracious in saying that they aren't against a garage that conforms to code, and I'd like to point out that the variance that we requested is, first of all, a minor variance, of course, not a, a use variance and is 16 inches higher than code and 4 feet at the same depth wider than code. So in terms of a material difference from a conforming garage, we feel the impact to the neighborhood and the essence of the neighborhood is minimal, while that additional space allows us to have a separated third-car garage for a workspace that can contain dust from some of the sensitive equipment that we have for art-making that we would store in the upstairs studio for the enjoyment of our family. I think we presented these arguments to the BGA, and their findings were that we met both the hardship and the other, the other findings, including fitting into the character of the neighborhood. And with all due respect to our neighbors, I didn't hear anything and I didn't see anything in the variance appeal that we carefully considered that substantiated a reversal of the approval that we received previously from the BGA. So I'm happy to entertain any questions, show pictures of comp garages within an immediate radius of our house, including on the other side of Princeton, the other side of Goodrich, and several on the other side of Wheeler Street as well.
And we do have access to the public record. My colleagues are looking at their computers, and we can see what's previously been in the public record as well, so thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Tolbert.
Why can't the garage be built within code?
I think the biggest issue with, with code, or the biggest reason why we want to be outside of code is to afford the third stall to be separated and provide the headroom on both floors to be able to be reasonably usable space for us to do art projects together primarily. Of course, we also have two cars, as, as many people in the neighborhood do and would use the, the parking stalls in the garage to be able to facilitate that parking off-street, which we're very much looking forward to as it gets colder.
Yes, remember, there was snow on the ground today. Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And are there other folks here to speak on behalf of the, okay, come on up.
Hello, my name is Rich Gerzak, and I live at 1790 Goodrich, right next door to the Bustos', and I'm here to support their, their project. And I think it, my belief is that it, it doesn't really alter the, the status of the neighborhood that we have. We're lucky to have very large lots. I live right next door, and you can see on there, we have large lots, and I think it'll add to the value of our neighborhood. It'll add to the housing stock, it'll add to the diversity of our neighborhood to draw more people into, into St. Paul. As I know, I moved here from River Falls, Wisconsin, four years ago, and we're lucky to find a, a lot in the, in this neighborhood that allows us the, the space that we have. We went from a five-acre lot into a small acres, but it was allowed us. But I think this really supports the project. I don't think it really alters that. I'm not sure, I, you know, appreciate the neighbors being here, but, and I also want to say that I think our neighbors, the Bustos', went through the, the process in the right manner. They did knock on everyone's doors within the neighborhood over the last several months. They have notified everyone of what they were having, and there is quite a bit of support in the neighborhood for it. There's not much disagreement on that. So I think you and I, I hope you can support this.
Thank you so much. Be sure to sign in. On the ledger beside the thing. You know, we all had a long night last night, and so we're firing a little slow, too, so we're all in the same boat here today. Okay, so let's see. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to the appeal?
My name is Annie Valentine. I live at 124 Wheeler Street South, so it'd be across the street off of the alley in question. One of the comments that stood out to me just this evening, going through a lot of the information myself, is the mention of character of the neighborhood. I would suggest to anybody in this room and who anybody is familiar with the Tangle Town neighborhood, is by its character alone, it is unusual. The way the roads twist through, the variations in house sizes, lot sizes, lot configurations, and so forth. I think as a matter of record, they may have other garages, comps, that have been built in recent years in the neighborhood. My neighbor himself has a multiple-car, very large garage that was built in his backyard. I would suggest by its nature, the city of St. Paul alone, you expect to see a variation, if not a variation, you expect to see a large garage off an alley in the back of somebody's property. Moving from the character, as far as the notice or the awareness of the variance, of the appeal of the variance, the award or not, my wife and I had plenty of time to respond. We chose not to respond because we had no issue with the variance. My concern here is that if we didn't, I sent a note or a letter that I believe is a matter of record, so I'm not going to go in all the detail on that, but if we weren't here to show support, that our support wouldn't be counted. I think that'd be a fair assertion. That is all I wanted to share. We support the project.
And I just, just to make sure I heard you properly, any, if people want to provide input on any of our public hearings, you can call, you can send an email, you can send a letter, you don't have to come in person. It's great to have you here.
But it's, it's kind of the, the idea of if you support it, fine, and, or speak up if you don't support it. I think that's the default.
Right.
Expectation.
Yeah.
That's why I want to make sure I was here.
Right on.
Okay.
I get it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
The last thing I would offer is I look forward the opportunity for them to have off-street parking, given their situation on Goodrich Avenue. The other thing that is unique about our neighborhood is we don't get our streets plowed. Winter just began today. I'm looking forward to less cars in that street.
And again, a point of clarification, streets that are on, residential streets get plowed when there's a snow emergency.
Yes.
That's across the city.
And that's another nature of an area, but it's not the easiest neighborhood to plow.
Yeah. It's a beautiful neighborhood.
Okay.
I hear you. Okay, be sure to sign in. Anyone else here on this side? I don't. Sure.
I had a lot of fun last night, too. I forgot one, one item that I feel like.
I'd say it was fun.
I guess the thing that I'd like to add is there, there's been some discussion about people not having an opportunity to voice their objections, and I do want to point out that I reached out to Matt Graybar after the appeal was filed, because there was the, the implication that there were other objections beyond Barbara and Dan's objections that weren't heard at the BGA meeting, and he was able to confirm for me that they received one objection, one written objection to, to our appeal, I'm sorry, to our variance request and approval, and there weren't any attendees at that public hearing, and I know all of the neighbors were made aware of that through the regular process that the, that the BGA has, so appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? You guys, no, we have 15 minutes per side, and the one side said, we're, we're good. Mr. Tolbert moves to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails. Mr. Tolbert.
I have a question for Mr. Graybar.
Madam President, Councilmember Tolbert?
What's, what's the time on this decision? What's the 1099 timeline?
The date the, needed to have a decision made?
Yeah.
One second, please. The deadline for action was November 1st. We did send a letter of extension, the 1599 letter, to extend it out to December for the new one. I can actually get the letter if you'd like.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Ms. Naker.
Thank you. It's always hard to not just readjudicate these matters in front of us as opposed to just focusing on the errors in fact finding or procedure that are being alleged, and so I'm trying to zero in on the error, and I think the one that I'm hearing and seeing in the appeal is the clerical problems at the Department of Safety and Inspections that resulted in the objection not being heard at the BGA public hearing. Can you talk a little bit more about what, what happened there? And then I have a follow-up question for our city attorney as to whether or not that rises to the level of an error in procedure, but can, can you tell us a little bit more about what that, what occurred?
Absolutely. Madam President, Councilmember, I was out on military leave of absence during that time, so I set up a forward, so that way anytime I received an email, it automatically sends to Mr. Diata, the zoning administrator, since he would be presenting at the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so the morning that he, it was actually Monday morning, he wasn't able to make it back into the office, which to receive Mr. Carlson's objection statement, since he, we're short-staffed, he was out at meetings and doing various inspections, so he wasn't able to return to his office to get the email for the statement of opposition.
And then I'm just wondering what the line is in terms of, of an error in procedure? If one message of objection is not registered by the BGA, does that, is that just a judgment call on our part? Is there sort of a line as to what procedure has to be?
Councilmembers, Councilmember Naker, the issue is the, the basis for denial needs to be based on the zoning code. An error in a procedure doesn't in and of itself form a basis for denial, and keep in mind that we have 1599 requirements here as well. So, you know, wherein maybe a different case, you could send it back to an ALJ, for example, in a licensing case. That's really not an option in the zoning realm because of 1599.
So an error in fact finding or procedure, though? Procedure, this doesn't?
I do not believe this rises to the level of an error in procedure that would, that would allow the council to, to base its decision on that alone.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Tolbert.
I think it would make sense, and I'm going to make a motion to lay this over to the 3:30 meeting next week. I think it makes sense to reread the BGA, after the testimony, reread the BGA as well as the staff findings on this issue, and I think having that extra time would give a more thoughtful decision to this council. So I'm going to make a motion to lay this over to the 3:30 portion of the meeting next week.
All right, so Mr. Tolbert has made a motion to lay the matter over to, till next week, to allow more time for consideration, and that will be at the 3:30 portion of the meeting. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed. The item is laid over to November 13th at 3:30.
And just to clarify, that's when we'll be making, likely be making a decision on the matter. It's not, the public hearing's been closed, so there won't be time to testify again, correct?
The council will be deliberating at 3:30 at the next meeting, but the public hearing is closed.
Yeah, so there won't be more testimony next week.
Item number 51, Resolution Public Hearing 19-354, establishing the water charges for 2020.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Tolbert moves to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is laid over to December 11th. Item number 52, Resolution Public Hearing 19-359, setting the 2020 sanitary sewer and storm sewer rates.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Tolbert moves to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is laid over to December 11th. Item number 53, Resolution Public Hearing 19-377, setting the recycling service fee for 2020 and authorizing Public Works to request $840,830 in SCOR grant funds from Ramsey County to support the curbside recycling program under contract with Eureka Recycling.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Prince moves to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is laid over to December 11th. Item number 54, Resolution Public Hearing 19-378, setting the solid waste service fee portion of the recycling and solid waste service fee for 2020.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed. Five in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is laid over to December 11th. Item number 55, Ordinance 19-67, Amending Section 220.05 of the Legislative Code to Set Rates for Base Level Garbage Service to Be Effective January 1, 2020.
All right. And I believe Deputy Mayor Tinter is here and Mr. Swanson. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to join me today. Yesterday, residents affirmed their support for coordinated collection in the city of St. Paul. We know there remain aspects of the program we need to continue to improve. However, the decision before you now is setting the rates for 2020. Over the course of the past several months, the city has been in negotiations with the haulers consortium to set next year's rates for the more than 73,000 households that receive service. The attorney for the haulers consortium submitted documents for public review. Therefore, I'm providing all of the correspondence we have had with the haulers consortium over the past several months. As the council is aware, I'd like to recap the last three months of negotiations. On August 21st, the haulers consortium proposed a $2.5 million increase in the rates for 2020. Again, discussions on rates began with a proposal by the haulers consortium to increase rates paid by St. Paul residents by $2.5 million. On August 30th, the city requested a meeting to discuss what we understand to be our residents' primary concerns, the price of service, the inability for duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes to share carts, and the inability for townhomes to opt out of organized collection. The city also alerted the haulers consortium that we needed to have rates settled by September 25th to provide time for the necessary approval process. On September 9th, the haulers consortium clearly stated it did not want to discuss a rate reduction, cart sharing for multi-unit households, or opt-outs for townhomes. The haulers consortium requested a response from the city to their proposed $2.5 million rate increase. Based on the process laid out in the contract, on September 11th, the city proposed a $1 million rate reduction for our residents. A meeting was set for September 19th, but on September 18th, contrary to the requirements in the contract, the haulers consortium indicated it would not discuss rates. On September 25th, the city reminded the consortium that rates needed to be submitted to the legal ledger on September 30th. At that point, the haulers consortium requested the city freeze rates at the 2019 levels. Agreeing to that would have meant our residents would be paying more than what the data submitted by the haulers shows that our residents should. We've used the process and formula laid out in the contract to calculate 2020 rates that are before you. As we continue to work to improve citywide collection, a critical piece of that work will be to engage residents who have voiced valid concerns during the first year of this program. That's why we are proposing to establish a resident advisory board on citywide garbage and solid waste with the goal of providing input on and possible improvements to the program. We look forward to working with all of you on the council, everyone in our community, and the haulers to improve coordinated collection in St. Paul. And Chris Swanson is here with me as well, if there are any questions.
All right. Madam President, councilmembers, my name is Chris Swanson. I'm the Solid Waste Program Supervisor for the city of St. Paul. I'd like to thank you for having me here tonight to present the 2020 garbage hauling rates. The city's contract with consortium describes an annual price adjustment procedure. The adjustments are based on the following items. The non-fuel portion of the rate, which, based on an increase in CPI, went up 2%. The fuel portion of the rate reflecting the on-highway diesel price of fuel, that portion did not change as it did not hit $3.50. The county's tipping fee, which has increased from $69 to $82 per ton. And then the total tonnage of material collected for the previous 12 months. That tonnage was 56,768 tons. That information about the tonnage was provided by the haulers to the city. The monthly rates that residents will see on their bills beginning January 1, 2020 are as follows. Small every other week cart will be $19.20 a month. The small cart will be $22.43 a month. The medium cart will be $31.3 a month. And the large cart will be $33.15 a month. I'm open to any questions to propose adjustments to the 2020 garbage rates.
Ms. Naker.
Thank you. I appreciate the background information that the deputy mayor shared in terms of the negotiations that we've had, and I appreciate the firm negotiation in terms of price lowering. I just want to be clear, the rates you shared, Mr. Swanson, are about a dollar less per month, give or take, for each of the services.
Yep. Madam President, councilmembers, that's roughly a dollar less per month for residents for services for 2020.
Ms. Prince.
And I'm sorry if I missed this. Ms. Tinter said that the haulers believe there's a $2.5 million rate increase that they're entitled to. Has that, has that number changed? If I missed that, I was reading through some of the material. Is that where we're still at, is we're $2.5 million apart?
That was the haulers' initial proposal to the city for 2020 rates.
And there has not been a?
There has been some decrease over the past couple of months. I think where we left it was a flat, or leave the rates flat for 2020 for six months.
Okay. So we were $2.5 million apart, and now they're saying just leave it where it is in 2019.
Council President, Councilmember, I'll let the haulers speak to where their positions are. My understanding of where we went in the negotiations was that they started at a $2.5 million increase on our residents. That was their initial proposal. You'd have to ask them what that's based on. What we proposed equated to about a million dollar decrease in rates for our residents, and that's roughly where we are still at, and that's what's before you. At one point, they requested that we freeze the rates, which would have been status quo moving into 2020. We believe that our residents should see a decrease in their rates in 2020.
And that's based on the formula that's in the contract?
Correct.
Ms. Prince.
And could you, when I talked to Mr. Swanson in an explanation of the rates, it's my understanding that under the terms of the contract, each of the, the way we arrived at those rates is based on standards and government federal guidelines for fuel and so forth. Could you just review those?
Sure. Madam President, councilmembers, so I'll go through how we determined the influencers for the rates in the contract again. So the non-fuel portion of the rate, which is based on the CPI, went up 2%. The CPI comes from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. The fuel portion of the rate reflecting the on-highway fuel, diesel fuel, price of fuel, that did not change. That comes from the Department of Energy Administration. The county's tipping fee, that increased from $69 to $82 per ton. That was direct from the county. They informed us of that rate increase. And finally, we have the total tonnage of material collected for the previous 12 months. That was 56,768 tons. That was from actual tonnage reported by the haulers to the city.
Okay. So according to the way you've described that, there's, there should be little room for disagreement. They provided us with the tonnage, and the other figures are all set in law. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prince. Ms. Nelson.
I'm actually, I'll hold till the end. A lot of my comments are either being addressed or questions being answered, so I'm just going to wait. Thanks.
Okay. Are there other questions? Okay. Great. This is the public hearing. Is there, let's see. Okay, actually, yes, thanks for that reminder. We do, the rates described by Mr. Swanson are version 2 in led to star, so I do need to move version 2. And that just reflects what was reported to us right now in the report. Any questions on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed. The amendment is approved.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this rate reduction? Come on up.
Madam Chairwoman and members of the council, my name is Dan Schleck. I am legal counsel for the St. Paul Haulers LLC Consortium, as the previous speakers have referred to the consortium in general. First, let me say that I, in my working on this contract over the last few months and working with the city, I think that the characterization of what's been done so far is not true and, to some extent, inappropriate. For the record, the city staff that we've worked with on this particular issue have attempted to intimidate the haulers and tell them that it's basically the city's way or the highway without really any justification for that. I think that many of the things that the city staff has just relayed to you is incorrect, not defensible legally, you can take that up with your city attorney, and also problematic with respect to the requirement that the city work with the haulers in good faith. So far, from the hauler's standpoint, the city has not worked with us in good faith. And I think that's plain to see by way of the testimony that's just been given. As you all know, there's currently a contract in place between the city and the haulers consortium that provides for the haulers to pick up trash within the city of St. Paul. I think that it is beneficial for all the residents of St. Paul that last night the referendum did pass and that we're going to continue with the contract that we have in place. To that end, city representatives have indicated in the past that the city was interested in keeping small haulers involved with trash collection within the city. Since we have originally commenced this contract, three small haulers have had to drop out of the haulers consortium because of the unreasonable administrative and bureaucratic burden that has been placed on these small haulers with respect to operations of their company.
Mr. Schleck, I'm just, as earlier in one of our hearings, I reminded the person who was testifying that we're to stay focused on what we're talking about, which is the rates.
And that's what I'm getting to. This is all a basis for our discussion of the rates.
Because you're talking about small haulers.
That's right. Who are probably most affected by the rates from our standpoint. There are many new reporting requirements that have been imposed on these small haulers, changes that have been imposed by city staff with really no justification, including changes to formats of documents, formats of bills that, for some reason, don't seem to register with staff. That costs small haulers and big haulers lots of money in IT costs and administrative costs.
Excuse me. Ms. Prince.
Can I just ask one question, Mr. Schleck? Have these not been handled through amendments to the contract?
They have not.
So could you be specific about what changes have been made that are not reflected in the contract?
We have sent out notices of late payment to residents who have not paid their bills for the last three quarters. Additional notices will be going out this last quarter of 2019. In each instance, the city has requested that we change the form of those notices. These are documents that are generated by computer, and in each case, somebody needs to go in and reprogram these systems to print these notices differently. And if you look at the progression of the notices, I would challenge all of you to see what the difference is in terms of what the actual notices say. So there's one example. There's other accounting practices with respect to the imposition of late fees, which was addressed by way of an amendment, but not the cost associated with changing all the systems. These are the things that have been driving the small haulers out. The small haulers are not getting out of the business. What they've been doing is simply having to sell out to a larger company that can better work with the administrative costs that have been imposed as a result of staff requests. We would have some of the small haulers come in and speak with you tonight, but they have not, schedule-wise, are not available tonight, but will be available for the next public hearing to come in and plead their case on their own. But it all comes down to the rate problem. In our opinion, the city staff really has not negotiated in good faith for resolution of these 2020 rate changes. It is true that the city has attempted, the city staff has attempted, to basically tell us, not negotiate with us, I think it was a mischaracterization, when it was stated that they've been negotiating with us. They've told us what the rates are going to be and with no negotiation. The only changes that have been made to the city rates are ones that have corrected errors by the city's own admission, and that's it. There have been no changes in the rates proposed to us since the beginning of the negotiations, while, as stated earlier, our original proposal was to increase costs by $2.5 million. And it's important to note that that is less than 10% of the value of the contract, and I'll show you why in a minute. But we have dropped that request, and as stated earlier, our proposal at this point is to keep rates the same for 2020 as they were for 2019. That is the current city proposal.
Ms. Naker.
Thank you. Given that the contract, Mr. Schleck, is really specific about the reasons why the prices can go up, as we heard earlier, I'm curious how the consortium could justify a $2.5 million increase and then also using the same calculations justify no increase. It seems like one of those two calculations couldn't be based on objective criterias laid out in the contract.
That's a good question, and you're leading me into one of my discussion points, and I think it's important. So just remember, at this point, the haulers are proposing to keep the rates the same. Okay? And I think that needs to be clear. This is a letter, and I have copies for everybody if we can bring this up.
It's up.
This is a letter from Ramsey County, Establishing Disposal Rates for 2020. As you can see in the highlighted portion, there's going to be a $13 per ton increase in the disposal costs for all waste disposive in the county. And by the way, we have to haul the waste to the Ramsey County Recycling Center because the city said that's where we have to haul it. It's not the cheapest place to take it, and we have no control trying to find the cheapest price for disposal, but the city has mandated that we haul to this facility.
Ms. Prince.
Mr. Schleck, I need to ask you, that was negotiated as part of the contract. So if it's expensive or more expensive or you don't like it, that was the requirement of the original contract. That was one of the key terms that the city was seeking in the contract. That was something that we prevailed on. So why would you bring that up here as some kind of new information that should impact the bottom line?
Because it's important in terms of our argument and the justification for the rate increase we originally asked for. Remember, we asked for roughly a 10% increase in the pricing for next year. If you look at what this says, this is basically telling us that we are going to incur a 20% increase in disposal pricing on all waste disposal taken from the city of St. Paul. We were not even originally proposing to pass through all that.
But that was factored into our rate that we gave you. The increase in Ramsey County's tipping fees is part of what was calculated in the city's offer. The city's, the rates that we've set reflect the increase in that tipping fee.
Councilwoman Prince, I respectfully disagree with you. It was not.
And I just, I want you to know that when we ask questions, we are stopping the timer, but you have, we want to make sure.
I have the timer right in front of me, and I'll be, I mean, I don't really even have that much. This is going to be my last thing, but I thought it was important to bring it up now.
I want you to, I'm just, I just wanted to let you know that we are stopping it when we're asking questions, and I want to make sure that you're able to get to your reasoning about the rate.
So my first point, actually, it was going to be my last, but it's my first point. Disposal rates went up 20%. We originally asked for a 10% increase, and now we're asking for no increase. In my calculation, that's an extreme benefit to the city. In fact, that's almost a $5 million benefit to the city. The calculus on this is very simple. We pick up the trash, we get charged by the disposal facility, and we have to pay those costs.
And you're tipping significantly less than was originally estimated, and that is part of the formula that we're using. So I, to Ms. Prince's point.
Councilwoman Bren Moon, we are getting charged on a weight basis, so no matter what we're tipping, we're getting charged per pound.
And you're tipping less poundage.
Doesn't matter. This charge is per pound. If we tip one pound, we get charged this much. If we tip a million pounds, we get charged a million times this amount.
Right. Ms. Nelson.
I'm going to let you get to the end. Sorry again.
Okay. I'd like to address Councilwoman Prince's discussion about, and also Mr. Swanson's discussion about some kind of formula being in the contract. The city did not abide by the formula in the past. The city has amended the The city has amended the contract by its performance. Um, and I think it's important for everybody to note that if you look at the rate for disposal that's being charged to every homeowner in this city and is being collected by the city when the bills go unpaid, and it's being collected by the haulers, uh, throughout the, the terms of this contract, it does not match the disposal pricing in the contract. If you look at the city's website, the rates that are being proposed by the city on their website do not match the rates in the contract. It says in the contract that the parties have to agree to amend the contract. I can find no documentation that's been executed by the city or executed by the haulers that shows the contract's been amended, yet the rates being charged to residents are not what's in the contract. And I would challenge anybody from the city who would like to show me how that rate was calculated based on the terms of the contract, the rates that are currently being charged to residents, because I know it was not. So that's my first point.
Ms. Naker.
Thank you. So are you saying that you have, that the haulers consortium has had a problem with the rates that have been getting charged, been being charged all this time because they aren't the rates in the contract, but now is when this objection is being registered? I mean, it seems like something that would have come up earlier.
No, I think you're misunderstanding what I'm saying. Councilwoman Prince and others have stated that there is some kind of formula in the contract for adjusting rates, and I would argue with you, there no longer is such a formula. The parties have amended the contract by their performance. There is no formula. And you can consult legal counsel about that, but the case law in Minnesota is pretty strong on that.
Question.
Secondly, I would.
This is, this is the first year of the contract. Has the formula been applied before?
Um, not when the rates were changed before.
When?
Whenever the rates, the contract was signed.
What's the date that the rate was changed?
The first bills went out.
So you, you believe.
In October of 2018.
And you believe the rate was changed?
I know the rate was changed. Look at the contract and look what's on the county's webs, or the city's website.
So you're saying that at that time, that the contract was amended and therefore it's different now? Was it just that portion of the contract or the whole contract was amended?
Um, I, I don't know the contract was ever amended.
Well, you just told us the contract was amended.
I said to you that the process that was undertaken by the city was not consistent with what the contract says. The process.
No, you, you were, no, 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 no. You were asserting things.
We're not talking over each other here, so if you'll just listen, Mr. Tolbert, to speak.
Yeah, you were asserting things. Clarify that.
The process for changing the contract that was agreed to in the contract was not followed by the city.
So the, how does that affect the formula?
Why do we have to follow the process now? Why can the city pick and choose when to follow the process?
All right, no, I don't have any more questions.
And I think, and right now, we're setting the rates in an ordinance as opposed to in the contract, so this makes sense to me. Ms. Nelson?
So, yeah, I'm having a hard time following because my understanding is there's these four factors we've heard. Non-fuel portion, one up 2% based on the CPI. Fuel portion, unchanged, price of fuel same for the U.S. Department of Energy. County tipping fee up, now 82%, was 69. So the, the factor that is changeable is the total tonnage material collected. And if we're talking about setting rates, what I'm looking for is argumentation from you on the factor that is changeable and how that, how that leads to your objection. Because all I hear right now is like a strange relitigation of things outside of the context for, for, for negotiating them, and it is hard for me to connect that to these factors and why that implicates our rates. Do you see what I'm saying? So, so on those factors, what is the basis? Is it the tonnage material and your disagreement? Because I worry that we're in this discussion where it says we're negotiating, but I actually think we're just trying to agree on the facts that are in the, in the, in the formula, and that's different than a negotiation. So, so it's hard for me to understand where the back and forth is and, and to even characterize it as a negotiation because we're just trying to come up to the same set of facts. So, so my, my, I could boil down my question to just, do you, what is the source of your dispute on these factors that would lead to different rates? Like, what is the actual difference? Not all the things about how you feel the city is interacting, but what is the source of the dispute?
So I will tell you this, and we have been through this with city staff. Um, the city staff has attempted to break down the pricing of this contract into four different components. We agree completely on three of them. The one that we disagree on is disposal and disposal pricing. And the disagreement we have is that Ramsey County is raising disposal prices by 20% and for some reason, the city thinks the disposal pricing should go down. I, I think I am not mischaracterizing the city's position. We agree on three of the four elements.
Ms. Naker.
I'm, I, thank you. I'm seeing staff shaking their heads in consternation, so I'm just wondering if you perhaps unintentionally are mischaracterizing the city's position and if we could get some clarity on that. Mr. Tolbert.
I think we should, um, let him finish his testimony, and then we can, uh, talk to staff would be my suggestion.
That's good. I would look forward to that.
Secondly, I think it's problematic that city staff is representing the city council that they are following some kind of formula when they clearly are not. And I'll show you an example of that in your own ordinance language. Please note that right here in the ordinance language, it says that a small trash cart that is picked up every other week has a rate of $19.09. If there's some formula that's being followed and a small cart is picked up every week instead of every other week, um, I don't think you need to be a math major to say that that should be twice as much as the other one. If it's picked up every other week, it should be half as much as if it's picked up every week because people are advocating some type of mathematical formula. That is not what's happening here. In fact, the people who are paying for the every other week service are subsidizing the rest of the people in the city. There is some random, uh, type of, um, adjustment that's being made here that is inconsistent with any mathematical formula.
Ms. Prince.
You know, this goes back to our original negotiation. I agree. I happen to be somebody who voted against the contract because there was only a $3 difference between every other week and every week, but that was something you guys agreed to. If you're, if you're suggesting that we should lower the price of the lowest-priced barrel, then maybe I wouldn't have been a no voter. But I, I, I mean, I cannot believe that you're revisiting that. I've talked to Mr. Revering about it. Why aren't we lowering that? Why are we having? But that was what you guys agreed on when this contract was negotiated in November of 2017. That is not new information. That is the very basis of the billing that we've been operating under since November of 2017, when we approved it. So if you're going back to, to 2017 to say, wow, this isn't fair, who are you representing here? The haulers? The people of St. Paul? I mean, that would have been my, that was my position in November 2017. I don't, I don't understand how this factors into this rate discussion. But it is really interesting for the no voters I represent on the east side that the haulers themselves are saying that the lowest-priced users of the system are subsidizing the rest of the system. That has been heavily discussed by all of us who haven't agreed with this contract. So you're, this is a really interesting line of questioning that, of, 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 of argument that you're presenting here because you're taking us back two full years to the negotiation of the original contract.
Uh, respectfully, Councilwoman Prince, um, I think that you're missing the point.
That, that is the second time that you have said to a woman sitting at this table that they're, they don't understand what you're talking about, and I'm running out of patience with that.
Um, respectfully, Madam Chairwoman, uh, this is not directed at any, uh, particular gender or any particular person, although.
We're not misunderstanding, we're asking a question. So just clarify and don't tell us we don't, we're misunderstanding. Thank you.
To clarify, my point was this. If these rates are being calculated based on a mathematical formula as been proposed, one should be double the other.
All right. This is, this is highly unusual. I, I don't understand the approach you're taking. I don't understand what you're doing. I agree with Ms. Prince, we're not renegotiating this contract. We're setting the rates today. So can you please get to the rates, the rates specifically and the formula to my other colleagues' point about what piece of this don't we agree with? Let's run out the time, and then we'll close the public hearing and hear from folks on the other side. And it does look like you have somebody who would like to also weigh in. Six minutes. So just, just to, did you want to add something?
Yes.
Just to ma, just to make sure that we don't run out of time, if you have something you'd like to add that would perhaps benefit this conversation.
Councilmembers, thank you. I'm Greg Revering. I'm the chief manager with the St. Paul Haulers Consortium. I, I think one of the things that Dan was wanting to point out and had just very clearly put, we didn't have total tonnage until September 30th. Per the contract, we would need 12 months' worth of data. Okay? So that's just one point. So when we were stating we weren't ready to negotiate, we didn't even have our data. Okay? So yeah, did we drag our feet? Potentially. But we don't, didn't have the data, and per the contract, we need that data. So again, I did submit that data. However, all we're asking is that we want to negotiate, not somebody just, or this by the city, just arbitrarily setting the rates and publishing them because we did not have the data. September 30th is when we would have the tonnage. Okay? All we want to do is negotiate. And to Dan's point on the disposal, when you talk about your disposal rates, if you have a 35 gallon cart and you have the half gallon, or the, the half of that size for the every other week, there will be a very incremental mathematical difference. It doesn't reflect that. And I've challenged that in, in our emails, um, sent to you as well. So again, all we're looking for is to negotiate. We understand that there will be a decrease in rates. Actually, one of the rates that are on the table right now currently that has not been, um, responded to is a rate decrease. So again, all we want to do is negotiate and not have a rate that's pushed and set by the city. That's all we're asking to do is we want to negotiate.
And I think that, and I, I very much appreciate your coming up, um, to, to speak. Um, I think that one of the problems we're running against is because of the delay in starting this conversation, it is November 6th. We're running out of time. We need to set these rates.
And truly, I respect that, but September 30th is when we finally got our tonnage.
But it's November 5th, 6th.
Yep.
Okay.
September 30th, but then it's October, right? We only have that couple days out for that, for the haulers will actually submit that information.
Right. And I do think that that's why we have a.
So we only had a month's worth of time to really negotiate. We really haven't had that opportunity. So all we're asking is just sit down, let's get together and work together.
Understood. Um, Mr. Tolbert.
Isn't, isn't that what, how the contract laid out how to do this?
What's that?
Isn't that how the contract laid out how to do this?
Yeah, but we, we can't, it said we wanted it to begin in place by September 1st. We didn't have, there's not 12 months' worth of data. One year from now, it's another conversation. But we didn't have all the tonnage in place.
So what do you want to negotiate?
Because now we have the, the tonnage and the formula that the city is going by, city staff is going by right now, is inaccurate. And I can point that out very clearly just from the every other week cart to the weekly cart. That's virtually, it's half. It's mathematics.
So what's to negotiate? That's what this.
We want to negotiate with the city staff. That's what we're asking to do here.
But aren't we just trying to follow the contract?
We are too. Yes.
Yeah. Well, there's a lot of stuff we'd like to negotiate. So.
It's part of the, it's part of the contract negotiate to negotiate.
Yeah, but there's other stuff we'd like to negotiate too. Are you guys open to that?
I think if we would negotiate the pricing, that will all work out itself.
Good to know.
Ms. Prince.
So are you suggesting that one of the negotiations might be that you're willing to reduce the price of the lowest-priced cart every other week?
By, by the formula, and if we, and again, everything shall be negotiated in the contract. It's stated very clearly.
I mean, to.
It's not a formula. I want to say it's a methodology, but it says shall be negotiated.
But to Mr. Schleck's point, the original rates were not set based on tonnage because that was confidential information that none of you would, I mean, we didn't have any way to base those initial, the original rates were part of a negotiation that didn't have to do with any of this. But if, what I'm understanding Mr. Schleck is saying is that if it's going to be reflected on tonnage, that we may be able to get to a point of, of, of providing the lowest-priced service, every other week service at half the price of the every week.
In the disposal, in the disposal portion only.
Well, that's an interesting bit of negotiation that we certainly ought to consider.
And, and just, so we are, we know this. We, we will close the public hearing today. Um, we won't, we won't vote for next week, so there is some time. But we do need to vote next week in order for the, the rates to be effective in January 1st. So if we were to go beyond that date, then to your, I guess, to your point earlier, there's, then there would be more negotiating on the table. Um, because we, we have to set the rates unless there's some good reason not to.
Right now, it's, right now, there's an error.
Right. And you, and your, your position is that there's an error in what's been presented to you?
Correct.
This is the third reading of this ordinance. I just to remind you again of, of procedurally how long we've been working at this here as well. Um, Ms. Nelson?
Um, just a comment. So, you know, I thank you for, for getting at what I was trying to understand, which is what is the source of your dispute? Not how do you like how discussions have gone so far, but from these four factors, what is the source? I am getting now that you're saying there's a dispute over total tonnage material collected. So that helps me understand your position. Um, I, you know, I am having a difficult time with the characterization that we're just telling you what the rates are going to be. If there's a contractual formula and then we run three out of the four numbers through it, we have the fourth one, and that's where the dispute is, I don't know how you turn that into we're just telling you what's going to be what. We are working through the contract that we have. So I just want to make that note. I know that we're going to have ongoing conversations. I don't think we should be sitting here, eight of us around a table, talking past each other. But I want to make it clear for the public record, like, here are the four factors. You have a dispute over this thing. Uh, we are working to bring forward, um, the data set we have on those factors. I would not characterize that as us telling you what, what it's going to be. I think that is just following the formula we have in place. I waited for 17 things go by to just to get to say that, so I'm sorry, it's coming 10 steps after, but, um, I think it's important that we are clear about what this is about, which is an existing formula. We're not talking about changing that formula right now. We're just saying, how much is what we're trying to approve right now matching to that? And now I understand the fourth thing that you have a dispute about. That's all. Mr. Tolbert.
Well, I think it's clear that they don't like this provision of the contract, and they want to renegotiate that provision of the contract, which is, which is understandable. I mean, it's a newer contract. I mean, am I right? You want to renegotiate this part of the contract, right?
Let me join in. Councilman Tolbert and members of the council, um, we want to follow the contract. I think our disagreement is what the contract says. That's what I think the disagreement is. I think that there is, um, not a meeting of the minds as to exactly how, um, disposal pricing is set in the future, and that's required for a contract. The consortium wants to follow the contract. Consortium will continue to follow the contract. The consortium does not believe that there is a default adjustment provision in the contract.
So my question is to you, sir, not the lawyer. You want to negotiate? What do you want to negotiate?
We want to negotiate the rates as set in 3.15 of the contract.
Okay. So negotiate what we're talking about. There's a couple things, you know, I think we'd like to negotiate. Are you open to negotiating sharing?
So again, I don't, I think if we would talk about the rates as, again, as I've, I've laid out to city staff as well, I think you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to worry about that. We wouldn't need to talk about anything about amendment to the contract. If we look at the rates that we currently have and do the adjustments as per the contract for the price adjustment, a yearly adjustment, we can negotiate a pricing that would make sense.
Okay. We're, all we're trying to do is set the pricing per the contract. You'd like to negotiate because you don't like the outcome of what the contract says. We don't like the outcome of sharing. We don't like the outcome of duplexes, triplexes, quads, and we don't like the outcome of, of some of the pricing. Are you open to negotiating that?
I, what I would want to point out very clearly is if you let us, if we can talk through and negotiate the pricing, we can handle that portion as well without amending the contract.
Ms. Naker?
Madam President, respectfully, could we go back to our plan of having our speakers round out their comments? I think we all have a lot of questions, and I think it'll be maybe more efficient if we let them finish up.
Yeah. And, yeah. There's 5 minutes and 19 seconds left on the timer. If you have anything you'd like to add?
Just simply put, we want to negotiate. I think we can handle the discussion around the sharing because of the price negotiations that we would go through. And of course, consortium members, we've, we've talked it through and we have an understanding of what I think would work, what we think, excuse me, would work for the city as well. But we need to be able to sit down with the city and have that, that structured conversation.
Okay. And is, anything else you'd like to add?
Yes. As I stated before, consortium wants to follow the current contract and abide by the current contract. But as I said, I think the parties disagree on what the contract says. The contract requires us to negotiate the disposal portion of the price. Clearly says right at the beginning of Section 3.15 that we will negotiate. It does not say that we will negotiate the entire contract. It says we will negotiate the disposal portion. And it lists some factors to take into consideration, but I disagree that it defaults or mandates a calculation. Going forward, the consortium intends to follow the contract. All portions of the contract, even if we are unable to resolve this issue, the consortium intends to follow the contract. Thank you. And again, let me apologize if I offended anybody. I didn't intend to do that.
It's been a highly unusual testimony, but thank you very much. Is there anyone else here on behalf of the consortium on these rates? Okay. Ms. Naker would move to close the public hearing.
Do we need to hear a second?
Oh, they're here, oh, sorry. Excuse me. We'll, we'll now hear folks who are in support.
And Madam Brennman, just a point of clarification I have. Are we closing the public hearing or is it staying open all the way through next meeting? Because if it's closed, it's closed too early per statute.
We, we do have another public hearing next week. We're just going to move to people who are here in support.
Right. But instead of moving to close, are we going to leave it open or are we going to actually close it tonight and then have another one?
Well, it'll remain open.
Okay.
So if folks are here in support?
I'm a hauler.
Oh, so you're, you'd, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. There is still some time on the clock, believe it or not. So we'll, I think, what were we at? Four minutes?
3:43.
3:43.
I was going to stand up and state as a small hauler in this whole conglomeration that for, for our struggle with how you, the city is determining what this factor is for determining the rates, that we're looking at the tonnages based on the fact that we've got some routes that we haul, that literally the truck goes out there and it isn't not making any money, it's barely breaking even if that, if some of them are going backwards. Now, it's easy for the city to say, well, that's not our problem because you should just get a different area. It's like, we had to follow the recycling days and that sort of thing. So it's not just like it's a particular route. It's like a particular area might be heavier than other areas. And that's where the variation from the rates from, say, Highland Park might have been cheaper in the open market system versus University Avenue where you've got different economy levels and that sort of thing. So I'm just kind of looking at this from our point of view, is that we don't want to go backwards hauling a route because that's not what we're in the business for to do either. So from a small hauler's standpoint, we're just, we're just trying to survive this creation.
And I'm, did you say your name?
Susan Stewart, and I'm with Highland Sanitation.
Thank you. Thank you. And Ms. Prince has a question for you.
Um, Ms. Stewart, is the, is the problem then the price per gallon?
The difficulty that Highland Sanitation is having, I'm not speaking for the consortium, I'm just speaking for Highland Sanitation, is the city wants to take this total tonnage and say, okay, this is how much was projected because we didn't know what every stop in the city of St. Paul was going to weigh because none of the haulers hauled every stop in the city of St. Paul versus what we actually hauled. And the city wants to come in and say, we're going to just lower the rate across the board the same amount, whether you're 35 every other week or 96 gallon weekly. And that's where the unfairness comes in is because we're looking at it from a tonnage standpoint as what it's going to cost us internally versus how the city is figuring this change in the pricing. So that's what we, that's what Highland is struggling with.
Okay. I, I mean, I, my feeling is that that's one of the problems that, that customers have. Is that they feel, is to Mr. Schleck's earlier point, that the small bins and the lowest number of gallons are subsidizing the 96-gallon business. Is that what you're getting at here?
Uh, yeah, yes and no. I guess because the city's factoring rates are coming in and saying that they're going to be approximately 94 cents a month less on each level. Versus the 96-gallon is going to weigh a lot more than the 35-gallon every other week. So they're trying to go across the board and say, okay, this is what the price change is going to be. Versus the weight of this every other week is going to be a lot less than the 96-gallon is.
Well, it does seem to me like we're getting at a real issue here where there might be an opportunity to negotiate something meaningful, if I'm understanding this at all. Because reducing the price of the, of the smaller bins every other week would serve a lot of the concerns that we've heard from people on fixed incomes who have this much trash a week and low-income renters who've not, never needed their own bin. So if what we're talking about is, is getting to a, a different pricing schedule, spreading the money out in a different way...
The one, the one tricky point I want to do, I want to make is some people have gone from a 90-gallon and they are stuffing it into a 35-gallon. So now we have 35 gallons that weigh as much as what a 90-gallon is. So it's a very slippery slope, and we're just trying to come up with an idea of what's fair to, to both.
But at least it seems like both sides might have, be able to find a common interest here in the next couple of weeks.
Week.
Hopefully.
In the next week.
Hopefully. So I just wanted to give you the small company and the, the big pictures point of view.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Be sure to sign in. Okay. So we'll, are there folks here to speak in support of the rate reduction that is being proposed? All right. So we're, we are, we'll move on, but we will have to hold the, the public hearing open. I just guess I want to say again, just to my understanding, we've been attempting to set the rates per the terms of the contract since July. That's my understanding. And so I think it's unfortunate that now it is November, we have one week left, and here we are being, you know, like feeling like we have to almost reopen the whole contract in order to do something that's under the terms of the contract and something that we're required to do. So to our point earlier, we have one, one week to set these rates, and the proposal that the city has put forth seems to match the spirit of the contract. That is, you know, what I'm inclined to support. If some magic can happen in the next seven days, I'm all for it. So Ms. Naker?
Thank you. I would agree with that, and it, it seems to me what we've been wrestling with here is that we either agree on the terms of the contract and don't like the outcome that has resulted from them, or we fundamentally disagree with terms of the contract, in which case we should both sides be open to reopening that contract and renegotiating things that both of us, both sides, have issues with. And I would say if the haulers consortium is not willing to negotiate other elements of the contract, such as what council member Tolbert brought up, and which I know many of us have been hearing from our constituents for months now, then we should agree on the terms of the contract as it is, whether or not we like the outcome. This is not our opportunity to air all of our grievances with each other, unlike the first part of this public hearing, because if it were, I think we'd have to be here for a lot longer. But my constituents are not going to have a lot of sympathy with the idea that because of the outcome of terms that we negotiated, we are, we are changing the price and not lowering it as it should be lowered. So I am, I am inclined to support the staff's position on this.
Great. Is there anything else before we move on? All right. So we will lay this matter, hold open the public hearing and lay the matter over for one week. That's my motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is continued to November 13th at 3:30 p.m. Item number 56, ordinance 19-63, granting the application of Joseph and Nancy Schumacher to rezone property at 3, 3, 30, excuse me, Prior Avenue North from OS Office Service to RT1 Residential and amending Chapter 60 of the Legislative Code pertaining to the zoning map.
And is there a need for a staff report on this item? Nope. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? Seeing none.
I'm the property owner.
It looks like there aren't. Sometimes you roll with that. Okay.
I feel like I have enough information, and I'm grateful to you for being willing to sit through so many other items. Thank you.
So Ms. Nelson would move to close the public hearing? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the ordinance is laid over to November 13th for final adoption. Item number 57, ordinance 19-68, amending Chapter 88 of the Legislative Code pertaining to water code meters by removing Section 88.10G in its entirety.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker would move to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the ordinance is laid over to November 13th for final adoption. Item number 58, Resolution Public Hearing 19-352, ratifying the assessment for the 2019 Street Maintenance Service Program for sweeping and lighting.
And it, it looks like there's some people here to, to testify on this item. Could we just get Bruce, would Bruce, would it be okay, could we get a quick staff report or? Hi. Item number 58 is the ratifying the assessments, and I'm just, could we get a little high level? Thanks. Sorry, there was some Bruce confusion there. Bruce did that mean thing.
I kept looking behind me.
Yeah. And I just, I just think that sometimes it helps just to, what are we, what are we voting on here for folks who are, are watching at home or in the chambers?
Council President Brennman and council members, tonight is the public hearing for an assessment for delinquent, uh, street maintenance charges for street sweeping and lighting. In August, late August, we send out an invoice to about 80,000 different properties, most of the properties in the city, for the street lighting and sweeping charges. And property owners were given 30 days to pay. If they did not pay within that 30 days, then we processed the, the delinquent charge as an assessment and gave public hearing notice, which was for this evening. And then if the council approves the assessment for the delinquent charges, then it will go to their taxes in 2020.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And again, sorry to put you on the spot. It just sometimes helps develop context for the item in front of us. So thank you very much. Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Come on up.
Madam Chairman and members of the council, my name is Jack Heschler. I'm sure you remember me from appearing before you with respect to this specific question. I just want to comment on Bruce's characterization of these charges as being delinquent charges. It is noteworthy that the city sends out notices in the form of an invoice without any reference to the fact that these charges can be appealed and can be objected to. Most people are, misunderstand the significance of that notice and go ahead and, and pay them, not understanding that in actual fact, the appropriate procedure for them is to allow it to become an assessment, and then they would have the ability to appeal the assessment. And in this case, the city has on prior occasions argued that those people that had paid the bill as instructed by the city's invoice had waived their opportunity to appeal. And so one of the problems that we have with the city's procedure here is that it is, we feel, misleading, and that your notice to the taxpayers are misleading in that you do not tell them that these matters can be appealed and that this is not just a bill in the ordinary course. The second comment that I have is the same comment that I had in August when I last appeared before you with respect to these matters. And that is to say that the State Supreme Court, and now the District Court, Judge Millenacher, has stated, reinforced the statement that if you are collecting money, if you are raising revenue, you must follow the tax rules. If you are modifying, attempting to modify behavior, you could use a fee in the nature of a parking ticket or a speeding ticket. But in this case, I think you will have to agree that the city is attempting to raise revenue to pay for this street work, and you're not trying to modify behavior on anyone's part. And therefore, these charges by the city need to show special benefit. And that was the argument that the city made before Judge Millenacher, that no, 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 we don't have to show special benefit for these matters. These are just fees, and we can collect these fees. And that was what Judge Millenacher said, no, I'm sorry, you guys are arguing the same point that you made before this in Supreme Court unsuccessfully, and these are not fees, not properly fees. I asked you last time in August when I appeared before you, or I didn't ask you, I suggested that you were, as a council, standing naked without any legal protection in terms of what you were doing. The council took that under advisement and indeed asked the city attorney's office for some sort of an opinion, and I understand that you have received one, though it has never been disclosed, and it is not clear yet. What is the city's position with respect to the, how, what is the city's justification with respect to these fees? And so in this case, I beg to suggest that, and I have provided a letter of objection with respect to a, a large number of, of people, which group is getting larger each year. And, and I'm suggesting that the city is approaching this in a incorrect manner, one which requires the taxpayers to sue you all the time. And this is not, I suggest, the best way for the city to be dealing with its, with its citizens. So I won't go through all the details of the arguments. You know what they are. You've read Judge Millenacher's opinion. But I do ask you, is there something different between the 2019 charge that is different from what the 2018 charge? Judge Millenacher said you could not use a fee to collect.
Thank you.
Hearing done. Thank you very much.
Be sure to sign in. Welcome. Whoops, did you get stuck back there? Sorry. What's back? What is back there?
Good evening, council member, President Brennman, council members. I'm John Purdy, and my wife is Mary. We're here, we were here one year ago. Maybe you remember, we argued about property that we have with our house on it. And we did submit to you a drawing. Mine's not in color. I hope you can look at yours. It's hard to see the property lines on mine because they're not in color. I don't know what you want to look at, but this is number 10 in Legislaw, yeah. I don't know what you want to look at, but this is number 10 in legislar, yeah. Yeah, that's, this is it, 10 Delos. And what that is, is that's a 50-foot deep property from street to the edge of the property line and 124, 125 feet on the, on the frontage. It's what's called a reversed frontage interior lot. There's many reverse frontage lots in the city, but none of them are interior lots. You'll find them on a lot of street corners, reversed frontages. Pardon me. I didn't want to interrupt.
No, no, no. I'm just, you, I do recall when you were here before. I was just getting a clarification.
So, so here you can see, we'll go back to 2017 when all the council members were having meetings in January and February to talk about a new policy and a new way to get these SMSP fees down on the ground to eliminate snow plowing, but put on some other fees. Street sweeping, street lighting, that's what we're talking about. The council, and I'll remember Mr. Tolbert well, when he said, when we were talking about corner lots, Mr. Tolbert said, it's not going to be fair to have a property that's right next to another property paying so much extra. We need to treat the corner lots. They used to be given a 25, a subsidy of the short side, excuse me, the long side. They paid the short side, they subsidized the long side. It was talked about to eliminate the subsidy altogether, but you ended up, and Mr. Tolbert and others on the council at that time were firm that there would be a reaction from your constituents if the corner lots, which compose, in our ward too, there's 2,200 corner lots, corner properties. That's a lot of people. I'm just a irregular lot. There's not very many other irregular lots here. It's a minority. But what happens here now, this is a conflagration of problems. If you look at 11 Delos, that's a corner lot. I've got written down 19 feet, and I know Bruce is here, he might question that number. That number represents half of the frontage on the street. There's actually 38, 19 and 19 is 38 feet there. But because of the 50% rule, for that part, for the Delos portion, they're paying for 19 feet. Likewise, this is a conflagration of problems. You've got number nine Delos, and that's a corner lot also. Well, it's a multiple frontage lot because he's got 10 feet on Hall Lane. So he gets half of the Delos street frontage. So in other words, he's got 37 and a half times two, he's got 75 feet there, but he's only charged for 37 feet. Now we've got a true assessment for number five Delos at 40 feet. That stands, there's nothing really wrong with that. But now behind me, we've got number 14 Delos, and that is called a flag lot. He's got 10 feet that the previous owner for my property gave to them back in '24 because he would have otherwise been landlocked. He needed to, he needed to get to his property. So my owner gave him 10 feet or sold him. That's why it's a flag lot. The little 10 feet that goes to his garage is the flag pole, and his parcel is the flag. That's the only two lots you'll find in the entire city that ends up in that weird irregularity. It's a unique circumstance. So we've got a conflagration of people paying for corner lots, and then this one that is causing the disparity. We've written down what the disparity is on our writings to you. It's still here. It was here last year. It's here again. And I would urge you to understand that we went to court to argue the same thing. We had a good judge. She was proficient. She was knowledgeable. She ruled in our favor, giving ourselves a 50-foot assessment for last year. That still stands today, and I would urge you to take Judge Frisch's decision and apply it to 29, to today's bill. Thank you.
Will you remind me the numbers, item number 10? Or was the 10th, number 10?
Number 10, Delos.
Okay.
Yeah, that's us.
Okay.
That's the weird lot. That's a, you can't see it on what I'm showing you here, but you can see it if you look at the properties. It's, it's the only one in the city that's like that. You won't find another reverse frontage interior lot in the city. Plenty of interior, plenty of reverse frontage lots on corners, but not interior.
Right. Okay, thank you so much.
It's because of the bluff. You know, that bluff is there. It's 30 feet away from the boff. And right down the hill is the Volca Chico, where the Taco House, you can see all the cars. That's the, and that tells you kind of where we are, in case you, I should have explained that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Is there anyone else here on this assessment roll? All right. Ms. Naker would move to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevailed. Ms. Naker.
Thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Purdy, I appreciate you coming down, and I appreciate your persistence on this matter. And I do, I do understand that, that you took this to court last time, and the court didn't rule on the merits in the case, but we did agree to the assessment that you had requested at that time. And I do know that that case raised some questions about what our policy is with respect to irregularly shaped lots, et cetera. And I, I'm going to be asking Real Estate to come and present the official policy to us so that we can both hear it and also discuss it. I know I have raised some questions about that policy in the past. I think we've passed resolutions discussing the policy in the past, but it would be great to hear from Real Estate as to what the actual policy is so that we're all clear on it and can discuss it, and we're going to request that that happens prior to you receiving this bill again. However, at this point, I'm going to, I agree with you, and I'm going to move to amend your assessment to $53 as you requested, because I believe that, that is the right thing to do in this situation without, without that policy in front of us. And I don't know which.
I think that is adequate.
Okay.
So I think we'll move the assessment roll. Well, let's, Ms. Naker moves to adjust this item to $53 to amend the assessment roll. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails. And then any further discussion on ratifying the assessment roll for the 2019 Street Maintenance Service? Seeing none, Ms. Prince moves approval.
Not me. I'm going to vote against.
Mr. Tolbert moves approval.
I, I don't agree with the policy.
The question is what you're, you're saying that you're going to be voting against this, and the question is why?
The assessment rule.
You disagree with the policy.
I, I'm concerned about the law.
Okay. And Mr. Tolbert?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. So Mr. Tolbert moves approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion prevails.
Four in favor, one opposed, being Councilmember Prince. The resolution is adopted as amended.
Great. Is there anything else to come before us tonight? Seeing none, we're adjourned.